Welcome, everyone. This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code, Section 59453, subdivision of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section 5495, Series Resolution Number 2022-01, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via application Zoom. Zoom information was posted on the agenda. Remote public comment is also available for the City Council meeting by emailing the city clerk at cityclerk@ci.series.ca.us by 5:00 PM the day of the meeting. Include the agenda item number on or public comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written comments into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the council and kept on file as part of the official records of the council meeting. If you have any questions on how to attend virtually or encountering any difficulties connected to the meeting, please contact the city clerk at 209-646-4812 or by emailing the city clerk at ci.series.ca.us. Welcome, everybody, to a regular scheduled meeting today, Monday, February 14, 2022. I now call this meeting to order. Can I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Casey.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
There.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Lopez.
Here. And we have an invocation today by Pastor Scott Elliott from Big Valley Grace. Are you here today? Thank you, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Only Father, I thank you, Lord, for the city of Series. I thank you for all those that serve and work here to make the city a better place. And we pray that you'd continue to provide prosperity and safety for the city for all those that live here. We ask that you would continue to be with the kids in school, and we just pray that the remainder of their school year would end well. We ask that things would continue to just get back to normal. And, Father, we pray that each person who gives time and effort into pouring into the city and the commerce and the business, all the things that take place here, that they would receive from you just a special blessing. And we would just see the city continue to grow, to flourish. And we ask your continued protection. And we ask you to preside over this meeting tonight and help all those that present, all of those that share, to have clarity. I pray for wisdom for those that serve on the council. And that we ask your blessing for this evening. I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Tonight's presentation. We have our proclamation declaring February as Black History Month in the city of Series. Today, we have Christopher and Sherrod Nelson, who are representing the Stanislaus Chapter of the NAACP. If you could please stand and come to the podium, please. Thank you. Thank you and welcome. Whereas much of the city honors strength and distinction can be attributed to the diversity of culture and traditions that are celebrated by our residents. And whereas African-Americans have played a significant role in the history of our nation and California, economic, cultural, spiritual, political development are working tirelessly to promote their culture and history. And whereas, a result of their determination, hard work, and perseverance, African-Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions to our community and our state, achieving exponential success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas, in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Black history throughout our American experience and is a fool of individuals who took a stance against prejudice, advanced the cause of civil rights, strengthened families, communities, and our nation. And whereas, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on past success and challenges of African-Americans and look to the future to improve society so that we live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. Now, therefore, I, Javier Lopez, Mayor of Series, California, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Severa, Councilmembers Jim Casey, Mike Klein, and Linda Rhino, do hereby proclaim February 2022 as Black History Month in the city of Series and invite everyone to recognize this month, celebrate the diversity and character of our community and highlight the importance of sharing our culture, customs, and traditions with those around us. I urge the citizens of Series to join me in this special observance. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much. This is truly a wonderful declaration, proclamation that you've given to the Series, the city of Series. And we accept this on behalf of the NAACP in Modesto, Stanislaus County. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We now move on to citizens' communication. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow more than, no more than, five minutes. Resolution Number 2007-106. For expressions of non-agenda items, matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not posted on the agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California prohibits the City Council from taking any action on matters which are not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the City Council must hereby, by the rules and decorum. The rules and decorum are posted outside the chamber's doors. Is there anybody in Zoom? Do you have any hands raised?
Yes, Mayor, first person is Lee Brandt. Mr. Brandt, I'll unmute your mic.
Welcome.
Good evening, Council. I'm assuming you can hear me because my screen just went blank.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I missed the meeting on January 24th in regards to, there was a whole bunch of COVID money coming in. And then I got to read, I got to read the Courier, and I just kind of made a few notes, you know, and, you know, asked questions, you know, like the parking cover at the police department. Will there be solar installed on that? And, you know, and it's just my opinion, you know, as far as the touchless crossing happens within the city of Series. Me personally, I would like to see every one of those things eliminated because there are people that go by and they push the button. And as a vehicle driving by, you're required to stop. And somebody hits the button and a thing lights up, and you have to sit there and wait until that person gets by. As far as the downtown biting, the $650,000. I, me personally, and my wife, and there are many people within the city of Series would like to see some of that money taken care of to help out the water tower. The water tower is a beacon to Series. I mean, you can see it from all over the place. And it's absolutely deplorable. You know, I would like to see, you know, something done with that, you know. And that's either here nor there. I did get to read John Warren's letter in the Courier last week. I thought it was a very nice letter. It was very well worded, very well put. I totally agree. I think we need to get more code enforcement and try to free up our officers. It did, I want to move on to something else. I went into the California Vehicle Code, and there's California Vehicle Code 27150. And I'll read it. It says, "Every motor vehicle equipped with eternal combustion engine and subject to registration shall at all times be equipped with an adequate muffler constant to operation and properly maintained to prevent excessive and unusual noise. And no muffler or exhaust system shall be equipped with a cutout bypass or similar device." That law and that code is not being enforced. I live real close to Central, and you can hear it. I mean, I go by my house, or I mean, they come by my house. They start up their vehicles in the morning, at 5:30 in the morning, let them run, and it rumbles my entire house. And it wakes up everybody. And the problem is, is the people in the neighborhood, they do not want to complain because they know nothing will get done about it. And I just, I just don't know where to turn, you know. It's very frustrating. And it's just, you know, that's about all I can say is that I really think it needs to be enforced. You know, I've given up on the idea of speed bumps because I understand, you know, the equipment damage to the fire department, police department, and ambulance and things like that, you know. But anyway, and then moving on from that, we got our water bill today. And in our water bill, there was an update for the updated construction notice. And it's a little late. I mean, they've been tearing up, you know, Hatch Road for quite a while. But anyway, that's about all I got to say. All I can say is a happy Valentine's Day to everybody. And God bless everyone because we're going to, we need all the help we can get. Thank you.
Thank you. Next hand raised?
Next hand raised is John Osgood. Mr. Osgood, I'll unmute your mic.
Good evening. I want to address the appointment this evening. Not that I have a problem with Chief Collins being appointed to the Modesto Series JPA Fire Board or anything, but it's a pet peeve of mine, and I've brought it up before. We wait extremely long amounts of time to address some of these subjects. This is four to five months since we've asked the chief to take that role, and the bylaws of that JPA clearly state that the council must appoint him. So, you know, if we could just start addressing these things when we actually place the person in that position or when the bylaws of these several organizations require us to, that would be real nice. The city manager, and most of you have heard from me, I don't like when we wait till the last minute. We've had a grand jury come down on us for waiting till the last minute or not acting as we should. And, you know, we got the new city manager. It's time for a new vision in Series and a new path forward where we do things immediately and on time. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else on Zoom?
Oh, Mayor, no other hands are raised.
Okay. Anybody in the public that would like to speak? Step up, sir.
Good evening, Council, John Warren, City of Series. I brought along the note that came in the mail today that Mr. Brandt alluded to in his comments to the council. And in regards to the recycling process and garbage can and how to organize your three garbage cans that you have inside your house, because I know everybody has three in their house so they can dispose of their refuse properly. I don't in my house. I just have one garbage can. But what I looked through and did not find was where to place your garbage can when you're not using it out on the street for collection. And I remember Jeremy discussing and telling us how the education program was going to take effect last October or last summer and that his department, Public Works, is going to be enforcing where the garbage cans are placed when you're not putting them at the curb for collection, which basically is out of sight, off the street, in your backyard or in your garage or wherever you choose to keep them out of sight. There was nothing in this document about that. And we have a big problem in our city in that regard. I remember the last code enforcement officer that was hired, his main job was to go out and enforce this, which never happened. The rules got changed a little bit, but basically, they're the same. So I would hope that the city would get some direction as to how they're going to go about enforcing the placement of the garbage cans out of sight when they're not being used and take some action in the matter. Thank you very much.
Is there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none? Oh. Step one up, sir.
Jean Yankley Series. Just want to kind of shout out to, not to council so much, but it might involve them a little bit, the people of Series, kind of like a public service announcement. For years, there's only been a few people that show up at these city council meetings. And this is addressed to the people watching tonight or listening, however they wish to view this or hear it. And mostly the people behind me, never see them, but when there's an issue or something they want passed or various other things. But I want to let the people listening tonight know that we need your help, and I've said this before. We need your help. You need to get involved. If there's any problem, anything in the city that you see abnormal, something that's bothering you for years or weeks or months or days, it doesn't matter how long. If there's an issue and you want it resolved and you need some action on it, please call the police department or please call the city clerk. If you don't know your council members or who your council member is in your district, you can go to the internet, to ci.series.ca.us. And if you're well off to figure out the internet, no matter what age you are, you might be able to navigate it. If not, I think the best thing to do, if you can't figure out who your council member is or their telephone number or their email address or the chief of police or any other department that you're concerned about and issues you have, please call and don't get me, get her upset, but please call Diane Perez at 209-531-5731. Please try and get here at least once a month, twice a month, if you can, and get involved in your community. If you don't, then what these people up here do for you, even though you voted for them, might not be your same views that you had when you voted for them. So please come out and participate in these city council meetings. We need you. Thank you.
Any other members in the public? Seeing none? Clerk, do we have any emails? Okay. The public comment period is now closed. Moving on to appointments. Boards and Commissions, we have one. Resolution Number 2022-04. Counsel concurrence of Mayor Lopez's recommendation to appoint the chief of police as the city of Series and represent some of the Modesto Series Fire Protecting Agency, GPA Oversight Committee.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
The item before you, it's exactly what you just said. This, my appointment to this oversight committee needs the approval of the council, and that's what we're asking for tonight.
Thank you. Start off with counsel. Any comments, Klein?
Well, I have a couple of questions. First question is, does it need to be a current city employee? Can it be a retiree or can it be a public appointment?
I don't have the answer to that question. I believe it's just for, to make sure that we have representation from the city. I know Chief Wise was on this committee prior to him moving on, and he might have some more insight that he can provide.
So in the second part of this, before I go to Chief Wise's, wanted to address what Mr. Osgood stated and posted on the Series public forum. First off, this is a JPA with Modesto City for the consolidation of the industrial fire department. Has nothing to do with Modesto merging with Series Fire Protection. It is an oversight of the combination when industrial fire was taken over by the city of Series and the city of Modesto. And all it is, is a financial, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, because you and me had talked today about it, going over their finances, things going right. You have two members from Modesto City. You have two members from the city of Series and then a finance director from the city of Modesto. It's an oversight. All it is is financials. Am I correct?
Correct, Councilman Klein. This arrangement started in 1993 when the city of Series and the city of Modesto took over the industrial fire protection area. Initially started with a fire district board. And approximately 10 years ago, a JPA formed between the city of Series and the city of Modesto. And according to the JPA, there would be the fire chief, the city manager from the city of Series, and the like from the city of Modesto.
So city of Modesto's fire chief and their city manager.
Correct.
And then from the city was the same thing. And since that process, our city manager has left, and we got a new one. And he needs to bring up, be brought up to speed on all these JPA. You had left. And the city of Series relinquished all their powers of fire protection as far as personnel, that kind of powers, I mean, just the personnel to the city of Modesto. So that took our fire chief out of the equation.
Correct. And that's why Chief Collins was chosen to represent the city.
So really, the only question I had, and I know I asked you, Chief Wise, is, does it have to be a current city employee?
Of course, I just read the JPA. And if anybody's interested, you can go to the website, modestoseriesfire.org. And on the JPA, it does list specifically the fire chief and city manager.
Okay. And since we do not have a fire chief, we have the option, we can appoint the police chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that answers all my questions. So I have no problems with supporting the appointment.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Any other council members make a comment? Seeing none? Any members of the public? Anyone on Zoom? Would you have one hand?
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Osgood. Mr. Osgood, I'll ask to unmute your mic.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that I wasn't challenging the appointment. I understand how the process works. My issue with it is, we asked the chief of police to assume this role some time ago, and it's the timing in which we do things. We should have had the council approve this much sooner than tonight. I hope everyone understands when we have these agreements, those joint power authorities have their own rules. In those rules, it's stated that the council must do this appointment you're doing this evening. My concern is that we just do it sooner rather than later. A lot of times in Series, we wait till the extreme last minute to do anything, and I just wanted to clarify that. I don't have a problem with the chief of police being appointed to represent us. Thank you.
Do we have any other hands?
No, Mayor.
Did we receive any emails? Okay, I'll bring this back to council.
I moved adopt resolution 2022-04 with the appointment of chief to the JPA. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Hi.
And passes 4-0.
Moving on to conflict of interest and declarations. Is there anybody on the council that declares a conflict of interest? Seeing none? Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a single roll call vote. Is there anyone on the council that would like a consent item pulled for further discussion?
I would not like an item pulled. I'd just like to note when we do our vote at the roll call, I abstain from 3A, November 22 meeting.
Thank you. Is any members of the public that would like a consent item pulled? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none? Bring this back to council.
I'll move to prove 1, 2, 3, 8, 4, 5, 6. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Hi.
Motion passes 5-0 with 4-01 extension on 3A, minutes of November 22, 2021. Thanks.
Thank you. There's no unfinished business. Moving on to public hearing. Item number seven. Public hearing to consider 1809 RZ proposal for rezoning of the property located at the northeast corner of East Hatch Road and Golf Links Drive to modify the existing MX-2 mixed-use-two zoning designation to a CC community commercial zoning designation within Mitchell Road Corridor. Specific plan and to consider an appeal on the Planning Commission's decision to approving a vesting tentative parcel map and a specific plant site plan entitlement involving the subdivision of a 2.16-acre commercial zone site into three parcels with a new commercial building proposal for each parcel. The City Planning Commission considered this proposal at their March 2, 2020 meeting and made a recommendation to the city council to approve the rezone by a 4-1 vote. Resolution Number 2022-07, adopting the mitigated negative declaration and prepared for a rezone 1809 RZ vesting tentative parcel map, 1810, and a specific plant site plan, 1811 SPSP, entitlement involving the subdivision of a 2.16-acre commercial zone site into three parcels with a new commercial building proposed for each parcel. Resolution Number 2022-08, amending conditions of the approval, 3, 6, and 7 for a specific plant site plan, number 1811. Introduction of the ordinance, number 2022-1070, adopting a rezone 18-09 RZ to re-change the zoning designation of a MX-2 mixed-use-two CC community commercial for the 2.16-plus acre site. Christopher Home, I believe you have some comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We received a request from both the applicant and the appellant. They're both present tonight or their representatives for continuance of this item to the March 28 city council meeting, the regular city council meeting. And after considering that, staff recommends that this item be continued to that date.
Okay. Is there any comments from the council? We now open the public hearing. I do have two yellow cards today. Ken? You step up?
Yes, sir, Ken Thornberry, River Oaks, Golf, and Series. What can I do for you? Okay.
I'm sorry, it was just the microphone was...
I don't need to speak to not, I might have one question, though. Just a question. Is it? And one council member, or does it take three council members to have any agenda item continued?
It's going to be three, yeah.
Got to be three?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. David, please step up.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the applicant, Mr. Thornberry and his counsel provided a letter near the end of last week that requested a six-week continuance and a chance for us to meet and confer. We incurred, so we look forward to the opportunity to meet, to discuss this project a little bit more and to see if the issues can be further resolved before the council has to consider this matter. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there any comments on Zoom?
There are no hands raised, Mayor.
Were there any emails submitted?
No, Mayor.
Okay, is there any members of the public that would like to speak besides David and Ken?
David Yonin, I submitted, pardon, I didn't, when you called David, I didn't know if that David or David Yonin.
I didn't realize there were two Davids, but go ahead. You're fine.
Okay. I've got two handouts if I bother someone to... So my name is David Yonin. I'm a neighbor out in River Oaks. And been living with this proposed development for a while now. And looking at the council, I don't think if I could get a share of hands, was anyone there four or five years ago when this started with Toby Wells and Tom Westbrook? Okay, we got one, two. So we got a couple of you, three of you were, were not at least in the current position, may have been with the city. So this is one neighbor's perspective as to what's, what's been going on and, and share my thoughts on this. So four or five years ago, apologize if I don't have the exact time right. Toby Wells and Tom Westbrook came out with the golf course, asked for a meeting with uh, as many neighbors as possible together to understand this project. At that time, it was MX two, uh, it was proposed MX two. Toby and Tom shared with the people at the gathering, the plans under MX two, Toby and, and, and uh, Tom described it as a, a doctor's office, a dentist's office, a counseling office, something that was clearly MX two. So there was no retail, mentioned no retail involved. Those of us gathering at the meeting felt that so long as a developer could work things out with the golf course, to the golf course's satisfaction, that being netting, liabilities, the road, what have you, those things so that the golf course, in all cases, could be preserved and not impacted negatively by the development, that with an MX two definition, we were supportive, I was supportive, I'll, I'll talk for myself. That being satisfied with the golf course, MX two, we're all fine. Understand things change, now the developer wants a CC definition, under CC definition, there could be all forms of retail basically on that site. The reason I gave you the handout is the council has approved other developments similar in nature. And those are examples of what happened when they're approved. The one on Roading and Mitchell has eight doors in front of it. The one on Central Avenue, I count twelve. So from what I understand, two acre site, should we expect twenty-four doors of retail on that site? If that's what you're all looking to approve, you've got zero approval from the neighbors in that area, at least me. I know I don't speak for everyone, but you can interpolate and figure if you got one guy showing up to the meeting on Valentine's Day, there's at least a bunch of people who are gonna show up here on the twenty-eighth who also oppose uh, what you're trying to do. This is not what we were told, this is a total bait and switch. It was supposed to be a doctor, a dentist, whatever, and MX two. The, the things with the golf course, they go without saying, they gotta be resolved. But as far as the development itself, we were sold on an MX two. So I, I don't know, what I'm seeing now is not MX two, I'm seeing twenty-four door fronts and it's gonna look similar, if not worse than what you've got in front of you, those are all one acre sites. Understand, when I spoke to one of the councilmen over the weekend, I, I was told what Mr. Singh is doing is lea, is legal. Uh, he's not breaking any laws. Why should any of us as council get in the way of Mr. Singh doing what is legal? Well, I guess my rebuttal is there's doing what is legal and doing what is right. If all we need is a clerk to take developer fees, we don't need a council to oversee any of this stuff. You're being charged with, what's the vision of Series? We got Mitchell and Hatch corridor, the highest density retail going both ways. Do we need another twenty-four doors of retail jumping down the road to River Oaks Golf Course? I would think not, it's only my opinion, you guys are a lot smarter than me. But I would say it's not a matter of, is it legal for him to do what he wants to do? It's a matter of council, look at this deal and take the high road and do what's right. This is not what people out by the golf course were told. This is not conducive to, to the area at all, when I can throw a stone in any direction, hit fifteen of these high-density centers in any direction.
David, your time is up. Thank you very much. We'll check in on Zoom?
No other hands are raised.
No emails? Any other members of the public? Step up, sir.
John Warren, city of Series. May I ask a question? Is this the public forum for the citizens to give their opinion on this project? Or is that gonna be continued to?
It still will be continued, but you're, you're welcome to, you're welcome to speak today, it is open for public comment.
As a citizen of Series and I live fairly close to the uh, the, the project, I think it should have stayed zoned recreational rather than being changed back uh, when that occurred with the general plan. And as I understand, the current applicant had the opportunity to request his change at the time when the uh, uh, general plan was changed. And he didn't do that. This is something that's come along after the fact, after the, the zoning was changed uh, with the general plan. And of course, it went to the planning commission and we know what happened there. And now it's here for the approval of what the planning commission has already done. And I, as a citizen, don't feel that we need that type of retail shopping center uh, in that location. It's predominantly uh, open. We have the city of a park and soccer fields to the east side of it. And into the north, there's just recreation, uh, a nice golf course and a, and uh, some, uh, some housing. And it doesn't seem to fit the location. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Looks like we have somebody on Zoom now.
Candace Fernandez, your hand is raised in Zoom, I'll unmute your mic. Candace, I'll ask to unmute your mic once more.
Can you hear me now? There it goes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry. Um, so Candace Fernandez, I live at River Oaks, uh, one of Mr. Yonin's neighbors. And I just wanted to say that um, I agree with Mr. Yonin completely. I was at that meeting where we were told that it would stay within the MX zoning. And um, I wish David would have had more time. Uh, he couldn't have said it better. And uh, hopefully on March twenty-eighth, he'll be able to finish his comments as well as I'm sure there'll be many, many other neighbors. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. If there is no one else, we'll now close the public period. Counsel, uh, would you like to make a motion to continue this item for six weeks out from March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two?
Move to approve continuation until March twenty-eighth on this matter.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Hi.
And passes five zero.
There's no new business, moving on to discussion item, item number eight. Expansion of the Series recycled water export via the North Valley Regional Recycled Water Program. Sam Royal, I believe you have a introduction?
Yes, I do, Mayor, uh, good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. Uh, we are uh, asking council directions uh, for tonight. Uh, the expansion of the Series is recycled water exports, North Valley Regional Recycled Water Program. We'll, uh, we'll open the discussion item with a brief introduction by uh, our Series Public Works Superintendent Karen Morgan, followed by, followed with a presentation by Del Puerto Water District, Ms. Anthea Hanson.
Thank you, Sam, for the introduction. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm really excited tonight to be here to talk about this item for the expansion of the North Valley Regional Water Recycling Program. I brought with me tonight some of the key members here, and Anthea Hanson of Del Puerto Water District and Dan Madden from the city of Turlock. I've also invited Neil from KSN Incorporated. Um, KSN has a detailed understanding of our wastewater treatment plant as they have done many uh, projects for us. And he's also helped with the development of this project as well. Uh, so just for a brief history, the wastewater treatment plant is a class one plant. Um, it's roughly one million gallons a day goes to Turlock for tertiary treatment. A smaller portion goes to Modesto for tertiary treat. And then the remainder stays at the site for land application. So the city has participated in the, in the program since two thousand and three. Uh, in the summer of twenty twenty-one, Anthea reached out to the city and she expressed the district's desire for more recycled water. July of twenty twenty-one, staff began discussions with Anthea and soon after, we began working on the preliminary design with KSN and associated costs. After many months of working through this concept, we feel that we have a tangible project to bring more recycled water to Del Puerto Water District as well as avoid current and upcoming regulations that will make land application formal difficult and extremely expensive. So tonight, Anthea from Del Puerto Water District will present to you the history and success of the North Valley Regional Water Recycling Program and the district's desire and commitment for this expansion. Following Anthea, Dan will discuss with you Turlock's willingness to move forward with this project and their ability to do so. And Neil will be here to support me and answer any questions that you may have that I might not be able to answer for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Mayor Lopez, city council staff. It's my extreme pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you about a program that's took over ten years to bring from concept to fruition and has now been in place for several years. Um, some of you may be familiar with the program, but for the benefit of those council members that are not, I wanted to give a brief presentation to give you a little history and understanding of what the program accomplishes. Next slide, please. So in order to set the stage, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Del Puerto Water District, who we are and why we needed this program. Um, next slide, please. Del Puerto Water District is a CBP water service contractor. What that means is that we have a contract with the Central Valley Project, which is run by the United States Bureau of Reclamation for water service to our agricultural lands. That contract was put in place in the late nineteen forties and it provides for up to three-point-one acre feet per every irrigable acre of agricultural land in the district. And that is plenty enough to grow most crops in the most normal hydrologic years. Um, in the Del Puerto Water District where we are located, um, our home city is Patterson, California, but we span three counties from si, uh, southwest, San Juanquin County through all of the west side of Stanislaus County and down into Merced County. So we are about fifty-five miles long and about three miles wide, pretty much traversing the Interstate Five freeway on the west side, so if you're familiar with that, um, that's our geographic location. Um, over time in the district, um, because of the water supply situation um, and rising costs and the regulatory environment of many of our uh, crops grown were converted to higher value crops. We produce um, over sixty percent of the district acreage now produces fruit and nut crops. Um, everything is high efficiency, there is no flood irrigation, we do everything on micro systems and drip. Next slide, please. Uh, we do grow other crops in our district. Um, over the years, there have been more than thirty different crops. This listing is just a, a basic overview of what we currently have. Um, again, a lot of tree fruit and nuts. Um, everything from grapes, wine grapes, citrus cherries, almonds and walnuts, of course, pistachios. It, but our row crops consist of tomatoes, melons, beans, mostly dry beans, um, barley oats, wheat, and many other fresh vegetables, broccoli, spices, uh, any of the things that you can grow on the very fertile soils that we are blessed with here in the San Juanquin Valley. Next slide, please. Because of the situation with our water supply, um, and because of the contract language that we have with the federal government, um, although we've contracted and our predecessors contracted for adequate amounts of supply, we have only received one hundred percent of our full contracted allocation in five of the last twenty-nine years. Primarily, this started um, in the early nineties with a very significant drought. That was only the second time in history where the district had received any shortages in the deliveries through the Delta Mendota Canal. And then things have just continually degraded over time. Um, for a variety of reasons, there are hydrologic droughts such as the one we're in right now and, and for the second going on third year. Um, but also the increased regulation um, and rules and laws that caused the water supply to be shifted away from the egg service contractors to other uses uh, of the supply. So over time, our Board of Directors, which is governs the district, they are all landowners in the district. Um, and similar to your council, they make decisions about how to ensure that the district landowners can continue to um, produce the crops they've been producing now for almost seventy years. Um, we've converted all of our irrigation to high-efficiency practices. Um, there's, um, we have relied on supplemental supply purchases in the water market. But um, if any of you know anything about water in California, it's extremely regulated and complicated and it's not just a simple task to take water from one region and move it to another region. And so this has become increasingly complicated. And the, the limitations on moving water from point A to point B are, are complicated and unpredictable. Um, during the last drought series of years, if you remember back, it started in twenty thirteen and fourteen, um, our allocations under our contract were twenty percent, zero percent, zero percent, and five percent respectively each of those years. Um, it was our job as water managers on the west side to ensure that the customers could get enough water to keep the trees alive and, and minimally, um, you know, produce whatever could be produced. Um, in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and last year, our allocations ranged everywhere from one hundred percent, fifty, seventy-five, twenty, and zero percent. This year in twenty twenty-two, I am now um, planning and have been for a number of months to serve my customers over two hundred small family farmers with another zero percent allocation. Our Board of Directors uses a long-term planning estimate that our contract for water supplies that we have based all of our history on will now only provide us approximately thirty-five percent of its allocation on an average, which means some years will have very good supplies and some years we will have none. Um, when we get into multiple years in a row of this situation, storage and having water in storage and having a reliable secondary supplier are very important to us. Next slide, please. So that background, um, as you will have, can well understand, um, clearly something had to change. And that's when the concept of the North Valley Regional Recycled Water Program came about. Next slide, please. So for any of you who don't remember, um, concepted back in twenty-ten was when our first cooperative agreements were signed. Um, Del Puerto Water District with the cities of Modesto, Turlock, Series, and Stanislaus County partnered to explore the concept of a regional recycled water program. The map that you can see, hopefully, up on the screen, um, does kind of indicate the geographic locations of the cities of Modesto and Turlock and Series, there with the stars on the right-hand side of the map. And then if you look over to the uh, more the middle of the map, you'll see the orangish color um, along the green Delta Mendota Canal. That is the geographic boundaries of Del Puerto Water District. So as I said, we're right along I-five in the canal from south of Tracy, California, all the way down to O'Neil Forbay um, in San Anella, California, right below San Luis Reservoir. So the blue, um, O'Neil Forbay and San Luis Reservoir are the blue reservoirs um, on that map. So the blue, O'Neil Forbey and San Luis Reservoir are the blue reservoirs on that map. Just as an aside, San Luis Reservoir is the only storage reservoir south of the Delta. The pumping plants pump water south through the Delta to our areas and all the way to Southern California. My Water District is also working on another project right now to build a small reservoir just to the west of Patterson. And so some of you may have or will hear about that as the months go by. It's called the Del Puerto Canyon Reservoir. Next slide, please. So our partnership when we developed, had to set up some goals. We needed to find a regional local solution to water supply crisis, make recycled water available for agricultural and environmental beneficial uses, provide Del Puerto Water District with this secondary source of reliable supply to help us manage our contractual shortage situation and the reduced reliance on Delta conveyance and groundwater pumping to meet these unmet needs. For the cities, there had to be benefits as well. Having a year-round use of a beneficial resource that was otherwise not being fully utilized was, was a very strong benefit. And then avoiding future treatment costs. What that means is that the wastewater treatment plants at Series, pardon me, Modesto and Turlock are governed by water quality discharge permits by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. At the time we conceived the project, Modesto was putting most of their water into storage ponds and evaporating it. And their permit was allowing them to introduce water into the San Juanquin River only in the winter months when the dilutions flows were 20 to 1 ratio. So most of that water was just evaporating. The city of Turlock was a little bit further behind in their tertiary treatment process, but their permit, they were about to convert their plants to tertiary. And previously, the water was going into the San Juanquin River. And it was, I might have had this backward, Modesto was about to go to tertiary. Turlock was already putting their small quantities of recycled water into the San Juanquin River and it would just flow out through the river system, through the Delta and to the San Francisco Bay area with no beneficial use. Next slide, please. So we have some very different challenges. Cities, as you know, manage many, many different things from police, fire, recreation and water and wastewater. Our district, our biggest challenge is we're an agricultural water service contractor. Our primary source of water was failing us, mostly due to drought, regulation and environmental concerns. And so we had this situation where our supply is just highly unreliable for our landowners. On the city side, the tertiary treated supply had minimal reuse opportunities. This is primarily, Modesto, of course, geographically, if you know where their treatment plan is, it's all the way out at the San Juanquin River. So about 16 miles away from their city. Turning it back around and taking it back to the city uphill wasn't a very economical or viable option. And so converting to tertiary treatment after the permit required left them with this resource that wasn't going to be used. For any city, and I'm not an expert on this, but Dan can speak to this, future treatment requirements of wastewater were going to become more costly, particularly for those water supplies discharged into the San Juanquin River. That's a cold water fishery. Unlike the Delta Mendota Canal, which is a man-made facility with no fisheries to worry about. So that was a big concern. And then, of course, there was this goal and challenge of how do you take this underutilized resource and benefit your taxpayers? Next page, please. So we set some objectives and this is as a group. At the time, Modesto, Turlock and Del Puerto were the active partners in North Valley and Series because of your transfer of water to Modesto and Turlock for treatment was what I would call a silent partner, but very much a partner, just as Stanislaus County was. So when we put our objectives together, from the district's perspective, of course, we wanted an alternative or reliable long-term water supply. We wanted to allow the cities to eliminate discharge to the San Juanquin River. We needed to provide some storage for this water during the non-irrigation season. And we wanted to be able to do this to deliver the water at a cost that was affordable to the farmers and supported regional economic sustainability. Just as an aside, our district of the 45,000 acres, over 28,000 acres is within Stanislaus County. So we're a very major economic producer of the region's resources. And then we wanted to also, and this accomplished the storage component objective and also, so we have an objective where we wanted to have an environmental benefit. And so this program delivers approximately 27% of the water that Del Puerto purchases from Modesto and Turlock with Series water being part of that currently. We deliver 27% to the Central Valley Project Improvement Act designated wildlife refuges in the, just south of the Newman area, in our area. I'm not sure if you're all aware, but this is one of the last segments of the Pacific Flyway in our area that's still in existence and being protected. And like west side ag service contractors, those refuge complexes are short of water also. And so their ability to receive water from the federal Central Valley Project is limited, just as ours. So instead of having the immediate need for storage in the winter months by building an actual storage facility for the water, we deliver the water in the winter to the wildlife refuges to support the passage of mostly the various species of birds that come through this area at this time of year in the wintertime. Next slide, please. So how we, how we were receiving our deliveries currently and why this program fit into our system. Next slide, please. This is a very rectangular graphic of how the water supply system works. On the top of this graphic in the light blue, that would be the area of Sacramento, San Juanquin Bay Delta, which is the largest natural estuary in the United States. And that is the hub of all of California's river systems. Our rivers run from Sacramento and the North Rivers into the Delta from the north to south. And then our river, San Juanquin River runs from south to north into the Delta. So this is a very complicated place because of the environmental protections that need to occur in the Delta and water quality objectives. The state projects, the state water project and the federal Central Valley project are the two projects that export water from that Delta through pumping plants that are located just to the west and south of Tracy, California. So many of you probably have been aware of and seen both the California Aqueduct and the Delta Mendota Canal that run along the west side of the I-5 corridor. And the canal that my district is serviced from is the Delta Mendota Canal. That's the federal project. So we're taking our water through the pumping plants in the Delta and delivering it to our ag turnouts that were canals, our canal side. On the right side of the screen, that arrow pointing upwards, that's the San Juanquin River. And the supplies going from east to west into the river are managed rivers that are the rivers that are neighbors at Modesto Irrigation District and Turlock Irrigation District enjoy for their supplies. And ag tailwater, of course, goes into the rivers. And then at the time our project was concepted, Modesto and Turlock discharges also went into the river. Next slide. So what we proposed to do in our solution, and it says conceptual, but we actually made this happen. So I probably need to fix this slide. We went ahead and pursued the environmental approvals and a whole host of permits that were required from agencies that were heretofore unbeknown to me when I started with this project, to get permission to build a pipeline that would connect the discharge locations from the city of Turlock and the city of Modesto's treatment plants through which your supplies were, are going. And pipeline under the San Juanquin River, up a couple of county roads on the west side, which was the county's involvement in this project and helping us let us use there right away. And then into the Delta Mendota Canal. Next slide, please. So this slide is a very good picture. I, I hope that you have a printout in front of you. So what we built was a single pipeline to the Delta Mendota Canal. We actually built the Modesto connection first. This is the yellow and purple hatch line. And that connected a new pumping station that we built on the property owned by Modesto at their water quality control facility. And that pump station and that pipeline were built, as I said, along county road easements and connected to an outfall on the Delta Mendota Canal. Shortly after that, about 18 months behind the Modesto project, did a second component of the project with this city of Turlock. And we built the dark purple line and this connected Turlock's outfall at the Harding, Harding Road drain outfall, up Carpenter Road and West Main Jennings and over to the Modesto plant. It was about 16 miles of what is now underground pipeline. And we completed the two segments. Modesto's took about a year and Turlock's was similar. Next slide, please. A little bit about the Delta Mendota Canal and what we were faced with when we wanted to put recycled water into the canal. It's owned by the US government. It's part of the federal Central Valley Project. It's operated by an agency that the Water District's on the west side formed called the San Luis and Delta Mendota Water Authority. It has a maximum capacity of 4,600 cubic feet per second. And it was prior to this project, the primary source of water to both Del Puerto and the refuges. One thing to note about the project, as I said, there were many permits and approvals. The most notable thing we accomplished in getting this project into service was that we had federal regulation changed. And this is the first ever in the United States introduction tertiary treated recycled water into a federally owned facility. It took a record of decision from the Bureau of Reclamation and we accomplished that in 2015 after about five years of work with them. But I am very proud of that accomplishment. It has set the stage and put our region at the forefront of being an example of innovative projects that we can accomplish when we work locally and regionally. Next slide. So the benefits of the program, I already talked about what we were trying to achieve and I am proud to say that we have achieved, achieved them thus far. Next slide. The milestones, as I said, the program is operational. In 2010, we began delivering Modesto's water into the Delta Mendota Canal. That's a picture of the outfall. It's just a weir. The purple ribbon was the ribbon cutting ceremony. That was the first day the water came through this facility. On March 8th of 2020, the city of Turlock, their deliveries started reaching the Modesto plant and joining the Modesto supply in the pipeline. And now, as we speak, since that date in 2018, mathematically, the district has received over 98% of the two cities combined tertiary treated developed water through the program. Next slide. Some other important facts and figures. We do have a 40-year agreement in place between the district and the Refuge Water Supply Program as part of our environmental component. We also have 40-year agreements with both cities to purchase the water. And I won't be the one to renegotiate those, but there are rights to renew those hopefully under mutually agreeable terms and conditions in another 36 years. To date, this is probably a couple of months old, these figures, but have produced almost 70,000 acre feet of tertiary treated recycled water, providing six inches per acre per year of this supply to Del Puerto's agricultural lands and a little over 18,000 acre feet of additional supply to these refuge complexes that are so needing of the water supply. And they use the water supply both to grow the habitat that sustains the Pacific Flyway as well as to house the different species that come through the complex. The district has fully repaid the costs of the upfront cost of the project to the cities. And we're repaying the cost of the project itself, the construction and the engineering and environmental through a per acre foot water rate that is already negotiated in the contracts. The refuge component of this project, they also pay for their supplies to Del Puerto. And we were successful in getting state and federal grants that have prepaid for their purchase of their portion of the water for the next 15 years. The final cost of the project, it was a $100 million project estimated to take about four years. We came in at a final cost of 90 million and we were only three years, so much ahead of what we anticipated. And another milestone or point I'm proud of is that over one-third of the 90 million was funded by grants. And the way that works is any grants that we received save the district interest cost on borrowed money that we use to finance the program. And we split that interest cost savings with the two cities for being supportive of the project and for helping us to obtain those grants. The pipeline that we built is sized for up to 59,000 acre feet per year. And so that was built on the populations and each of the cities build out plans, master plans at the time. I know those have been adjusted. We did adjust for the drought a few years ago to make sure we weren't being too overly ambitious. But as the cities grow, this pipeline is already in place, the program's in place to accommodate the recycled water needs or the wastewater discharge needs of all the three cities. So we, we decided to go ahead and overbuild to plan for the future. Next slide. So it very much is a model, as I said, for regional cooperation and its success. And I can't thank the city of Series enough. Along the way, Mike Brenton and the mayor's past council participated in all of our events and our attended meetings, even though they were maybe more on the sideline in getting all the permit approvals and the project approved. They were very supportive. That's just a photograph of what it looks like on the other side. It's a very simple irrigation connection to a major federal facility. And it is very much appreciated by the landowners in Del Puerto Water District. And I'm hoping that when we bring the final proposal back to you at your future council meeting, the request is, the request that I made is that we see if we can work cooperatively to advance the further portion of Series wastewater to the Turlock Treatment Plant for, for treatment. I believe that this water would be going to the program eventually someday as discharge requirements for ponding water and evaporating water in your secondary treatment ponds become more stringent. But given our situation and the ongoing drought, I think that there might be a win-win opportunity that we can, my agency can bring forth. I will hope that you will further consider this item when we do come to see you next with our actual final partnership proposal. With that, I think say a few words, and I am available for any questions.
Also, do we have any questions? You? Go ahead, speak first.
Thank you.
You're up.
Thank you, Antea. Hi, my name is Dan Madden. I'm the interim municipal services director for the city of Turlock. We conceived this project, well, not this project specifically, about nineteen ninety-five. Fortunately, over the years, as our project developed, we developed a very good partnership with Del Puerto Water District and created this project and brought it to fruition with the help of Del Puerto and funding sources as well as the making it more attractive through the discharges of City of Series. I had an additional flow providing to Del Puerto Water District. The treatment facility certainly has the capacity to accept the volume of flow that they are either looking into. More than enough capacity for that, as you probably well know, you have a pipeline, the primary treated effluent to Turlock that I think is four to six million gallon a day capacity. You're currently have a contract with the city for two million gallons a day and using only fifty percent of that, a million gallons. So there's plenty of ability for you guys to get it to us. The exception of the need to upgrade the pump station, but we have the ability to handle that additional volume of flow and look forward to actually accepting even more flow from your agency. Beneficial project for all agencies concerned. And it certainly is something that deserves recognition statewide as questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Also, do we have any questions? Also, member Klein?
I do have questions, but the gentleman from Turlock answered one question. As far as he's already, you've already answered it with the pipeline. It's it's already big enough to to allow us for increase.
Oh, wow.
But I have a question for staff. Is currently, we pay City of Turlock to take our wastewater treatment. We also have fixed costs within the city at our treatment plant. So if we increase our flow to the city of Turlock, okay, that means the payment to the city of Turlock will increase. How do we offset those costs and the differences? And how are we going to pay for that?
So we're working on some cost share agreements right now with Del Puerto Water District. And that's some of the information that we're hoping to bring to you next meeting. Part of the project in its conception was that Del Puerto Water District will pay for all of the improvements that are needed to get the water down there. And also part of the capacity charges that we pay each month to be able to bring our water down there and future water down there, that they have room to handle it. Can I answer your question?
Well, okay, so you'll pay for it, but Mike, well, the question would be, you would, we we're going to have to pay the city of Turlock. And then you're going to pay the city of Turlock for water. Are you going to help offset our cost and pay the city of Series for our increase?
Thank you for the question. Yes. Tonight, we just wanted to introduce the program to those of you that weren't familiar with it. But a full proposal and cost share agreement will come back to your council for review. Karen and I have been working on it. Hopefully, we'll have our first drafts coming out from from my legal review next week. But I would not have approached the city with a proposal that would put an additional burden on your rate payers without just compensation. So I think when we're able to work out a few more details, we have been working very closely with Turlock to determine what the those capacity charges are and what the cost would be to increase your capacity there permanently. And the proposal that I have been working on is aiming to offer to pay for all those costs.
Okay. I just, you know, I just sort of maybe expected that that some of that would have been drawn out at the end to explain that, you know, you come back with a cost difference and things like that in your proposal. That, you know, with your presentation. So I'll wait for the presentation with the proposal in it.
Thank you very much. The recommendation that that staff felt was appropriate, that we we introduce the project to the council because many of you didn't have the privilege of being part of the original band when we had it put together. But now we'll come back with the meats and bones of what the district is requesting. And I think that you will find that it's very fair and sets the city up for potentially cost avoidance of costs that you will incur in the future as the regulatory environment changes with treating wastewater and is not asking you to do anything that will put additional cost burden on your citizens currently for providing this extra water into the program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of the avoided costs include having to install tertiary treatment at the plant today. And just to treat one million gallons is going to be roughly forty million dollars. So we're avoiding some major costs that are potentially on the pipeline over the next
Okay. Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you. There is no action required on this item, correct? Direction the staff has requested to have them propose a proposal. And I don't know what meeting we, I don't know how long you guys need, but I guess we'll figure that out later date, correct? You don't need a particular date or anything like that?
Yes, and then
Okay. So we need to amend the contract today?
No.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay. So council, are we okay with them bringing that proposal to the council at a future date?
Yeah.
Council concurs. That is the direction. Thank you. Is there any council member referrals? See, none. Moving on to reports. Wasn't sure if Alex was going to bring up the mask giveaway that we're having. Alex, were you going to bring that up?
Um, yes, the mask giveaway will be occurring. Maybe the city clerk can fill in the date, but I did and was looking to pull up. Hopefully, everybody can hear me, an email. Excuse me, I received earlier today regarding the discontinuation of the indoor mask mandate. So California Department of Public Health statewide requirement that masks be worn in all indoor public settings in California will expire on February fifteenth. So effective February sixteenth, only unvaccinated persons are required to mask in all indoor public settings. So the plan is to comply with that new standard unless we hear otherwise from the city council. So that's what I had in regard to the mask mandate. I don't have the date for the mask distribution.
I have it here, just wanted to make sure.
So maybe, Mr. Mayor, if you want to cover that under your report, I'll defer to you.
Thank you very much. The city of Series has received a second shipment of six hundred and ninety-five masks, and they will be available for the community for drive-through pickup on Thursday, February seventeenth, from three PM to five thirty PM or until supply is run out at the Series Community Center, twenty-seven oh one Fourth Street, Series, California. And there will be a distribution center limited to three person, three masks per vehicle. Thank you very much, everybody. That is all from me. City's turn. Apartments? The council? Supervisor Conda, is he online or is?
Mr. Mayor, he had a scheduling clock conflict with him and Mr. Fowler.
Thank you very much, Alex. I appreciate that. And we are moving on to closed session. Thank you, everybody. The closed session. See you none. Thank you.
Please go to your seats and take your time.
And then open.
Hello everybody, there is nothing to report. Have a wonderful day.